Seven ten. We'll come to order at seven ten for the Town of Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, the regular meeting of Monday, May eighth. And as I look at the members of here, it looks like we have a full complement of our regular members. So we won't be sitting. Alternates at this point, Doug and John, thank you for joining. Thank you for your dedication. Moving to the approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes from our April, regular April tenth meeting, two thousand twenty-three, and our special meeting of April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. A April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, that was Jerry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Dick, second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes from April tenth?
Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, moving on to item B, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Dick, motions. Is there a second?
Janet, second.
Janet, second. All those in favor?
There's a typo.
Excuse me, discussion. You're right. Go ahead, Janet.
There's a typo under approval of minutes. It lists Mr. Frame instead of Mister.
Well, we all know that's not correct. So, okay, very good. So we're capturing that here in this meeting. And we'll capture under the minutes for approval. So with the correction, any further discussion regarding the minutes from the seventeen? Okay, all those approve of the minutes with the correction?
Hi.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions?
I have to abstain from that one.
Okay, nor abstains. So moved. Okay, thank you very much. Every section of public comments for items supposedly not listed on the agenda specifically. Um, let me see what I have for hands. I have Christina Sebo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just checking to make sure the website is up to date. Looks to me like the PCC has three regular seats and three alternate alternate seats, all with terms ending this year. Will all of these seats be on the ballot this November?
Yes. Can I answer?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Janet. I was gonna say I'm not the expert on it.
Yes, they, yes, they.
Play one on TV.
The the alternates come up every other, every two years, and the rest of the commission rotates.
Okay, so those six seats will be on the ballot.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Sherry Much, I think I saw her on. She's the one that keeps up the up to date that list. Sherry, you on? I guess not.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Sherry. Thank you.
Yes, if you go to the town website, we have a new feature there called onboard. And that has the up to date. Everybody's terms and the vacancies. And Janet's absolutely right that those positions are going to be on the ballot this fall. So she's.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Going through the list here. I see another electronic hands up. Is there anyone that has any other public comment? Oh. Okay, thank you very much. Bills, any bills received? Alex?
No, I don't have any new ones.
Nothing. Thank you. Under correspondence, we did have a correspondence. It was a request for Freedom of Information Act request from Charles Vidic. On, again, coming to us on April sixth of two thousand twenty-three. It is online. It does have to do with the calculation procedure for determining the threshold of twenty percent of the land area within five hundred feet of the site of the proposed zoning text amendment, otherwise known as PZ dash two, three, dash one by Campanella Rhodolaskus, Rhodol, Rhodolaskus, I'm sorry, LM Acquisitions LLC and Ashford Realty Trust LLC. And again, all of this is in the public record. It's requesting calculation procedures, a map of the qualifying property, accuracy determination, and the Town of Ashford land ownership. On May second, two thousand twenty-three, our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Mike Damato, did respond with the calculations procedures, the map of the qualifying property, the accuracy determination, and the state forest lands, as well as the Town of Ashford land to that. And again, that is all part of the public record. I won't take the time to read that in, as everyone is able to look that up. Okay. That moves us on to the public hearing, actually the continuation of our public hearing regarding PZ dash two, three, dash three. Special permit application per section three hundred dash ten for reduction of a nonconforming use at fifty-four C-Car Road, owner applicant Ruby Realty LLC. And again, this is continued from our four seventeen special meeting. I, again, procedure wise, I will open it up for a comment from the applicant and his attorney. And then any questions from the commission, as well as we have some items to follow up on, I believe, if it's not already covered by the applicant in their opening statement regarding a couple of requests from the Town of Ashford. So I'll go with that, Doreen, Dory, if you want to start.
Thank you. For the record, Dory Fama-Glede from Cahan-Curinsky in Capicella, representing the applicant who I have here with me as well. Really, there were a couple, just some minor issues that we held the public hearing open for. The first was because the fire chief at the last hearing just wanted to make sure that there was adequate access for emergency vehicles going to the property in the event that the third building is finished and CO'd. My client did have an opportunity to meet with the fire chief on site the following week. And as recited in your draft conditions in the motion, I believe he's been satisfied that if one of the two driveway options shown in the improvement location survey is constructed prior to CO, he would be satisfied that there would be adequate access to that structure. And in the alternative, if whoever is finishing the 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 structure and ultimately buys the property, if they come to the fire chief with an alternative driveway design that he approves, that would be satisfactory as well. So it would be either one of the options on the improvement location plan or some other driveway configuration that's approved in advance by the fire chief, then that has to happen prior to CO. So I believe that was one of the issues we were concerned about. I think the other issue that you may have been concerned about is I think you wanted to just have Mike Damato run by the town attorney, that he was satisfied that the procedure we were following was inappropriate process for resolving the pick and poke that we have here up on this property with, you know, three structures on one property. I do see him here. I don't know if he's prepared to comment on that tonight, but Mike, I don't know if that was something that you reached out to him to talk about. I do have email correspondence dating back to the end of December that that this was a good path to pursue and with the conditions that we had discussed and offered at the last meeting, an appropriate resolution to the issue. But again, I don't want to speak for for him.
And Mr. Silversmith, do you want me to comment now or?
I would love for you to comment now, Ken. Thank you.
Sure. Your regulation allows for an application for the special exception that would make the site more conforming. And one perspective is that because the including the religious aspect of the use is not an as of right use, whereas residential is as of right, that it would be a reasonable position, in my view, for your commission to determine that, provided the various conditions that Attorney Family Getty has agreed to, that what you end up with is an entirely a single use that's all residential, which is, I think your commission could reach the conclusion is more conforming than the mix of of the of this special exception use and the as of right use. So I reviewing the regulation, discussing it with Attorney Family Getty, and including, you know, the condition that the property is is will have to be used as, you know, I think the word might be used as a compound, but as a single residential unit that that that's more conforming than than what's there before, and that would be a basis for for approval. So I guess the short answer is I agree that the approach that is being taken by the applicant is one that your commission could agree with and approve.
I guess, Ken, I have one question regarding. And again, it might be limited or whatever. Is there a potential downside to the arrangement for the town?
Not, I mean, right now, I mean, it's a difficult situation because it's something's been approved and that that the use and that it was approved for is really not going to happen. So it seems to me that this is the the best alternative. It's certainly not, if the concern is to just set some kind of a precedent, no, not, not at all. You, you, this is very, these are very unique facts. And it seemed like this is a good solution. I don't see a real downside to the town to do this as long as, you know, the plan was otherwise, you know, satisfactory to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
My pleasure.
Any questions of the commissioners to Attorney Famagaleti, or even Ken for that matter, Ken Slater? Okay. Nothing there. So again, I think the by the fire chief and fire marshal and the input there has answered that question. Ken obviously has answered the other question for us. And I do see a couple of hands up. Let me start with, we'll go to the public comment if there's nothing from the commission at this point. Okay, I'm going to go to Nick, as long as Nick identifies themselves to speak.
I'm guessing it might be Nick Tella of Wellington. I just actually wanted to let you know people are saying they can't get into the meeting and it's maxed at a hundred. So just so you're aware, people are trying to get in. So.
Thank you very much. Mike, is there anything we can do about that, or is it something that has to be done prior to the meeting start?
The the capacity is five hundred. I'm showing one oh six here now. So it may just be a bottleneck in the waiting room, but I'm still letting people in.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other hands up here? Looking. And I will go to select woman Silversmith.
Actually, I'm not speaking as a select woman. I'm speaking as a member of the community. And I just want to thank the commission for how they've conducted themselves during this. And also, I know with confidence that you will be thorough in your deliberations and do what is best for the Town of Ashford. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silversmith. Okay. Bear with me one moment while I go through the list here. Okay, we have a request for public comment for because of some of the delays in getting in. So I will open it up to the town hall, Mr. Peter Ralston, I believe, wanted to speak.
Yeah, I wanted to dovetail on the comment that was made during the public comment section at the beginning about the terms that were going to be up this coming fall. And yes, it is accurate that there's six members that are going to be up for reelection this fall. I've also had the experience that when I'm going on the website to try to research how different members have voted over their terms, the information is it's there, but it's very hard to find. But I also think it's really important that all the elected officials, not only on this board, but also from the selectmen's office that are involved or not involved in any decisions around zoning regulations, that there's going to be a report card that's going to be coming out for for November. You notice that there's a lot of postcards that went around recently, the community. There's going to be postcards going around in November, and it will be report cards, not only for this agency, but for the other elected officials in the town. Again, what they, whether they, how they, how they handle the different matters for the town, and just be aware of that. And the other issue I'd like to bring up is just this whole process right now of having town community members have to apply for an exception to meet in public. All these technical issues going on this at the start of your meeting, not being able to hear, not us not being able to participate here at the town hall. How much longer is this going to go on? And why, why does this commission not have a sufficient high red setup? This is not sufficient. There's nobody here. We're just sitting in front of a computer screen. So as these issues start to come to light more, obviously, more town people are more involved now. I seriously would recommend the commission take another look at their meeting design and how they're doing this, because this clearly isn't working. And it's gonna, there's gonna be more people involved. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your input. Okay, moving on. And this is getting very, very convoluted. I'm sorry, Valerie, but we are still in the public hearing section now of our meeting. But we did want to capture, again, some of the comment that was missed due to difficulties at the beginning of the meeting. So, um. Is there any comment regarding the public hearing regarding the special permit application for fifty-four C-Car Road from the public? Okay, having none there, I'll give the applicant last opportunity to present.
Thank you. The only other thing I want to mention is, in the interim, since our last special meeting, I did have a chance to correspond with your CEO, Mike Damato, about the proposed conditions of approval. I have had a chance to review them all with my client. We are comfortable and satisfied agreeing to all nine of the proposed conditions of approval. And I'm happy to go through them with you, but I assume you all have had an opportunity to review that as well. But if there's any questions on them, I I would rather you ask them now than wait till the hearings close when I can't participate. But if you have any questions, we can talk about it. But if everything looks consistent with what we talked about at the last meeting, then then I have nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll reach out to the commissioners for any input regarding the following the conditions as Dory has described. Is there anything specific anyone has a question about?
Jeff, this is Alex. Should we read those into the public hearing now or during deliberation?
Since it's a motion, we would go during deliberations because there's no motion, actual motion during the hearing.
Okay, I just want to know if this be one of, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hearing and seeing, nothing else from the commission at this point. I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close, Jerry DeFrane.
Does Janet, I'll second.
Okay, so Jerry motion, Janet second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Hi.
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 Those opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Jeff, this is Dick. The gentleman that is in the meeting room that spoke, I did not get his name. Was his name put into the record?
It's 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 Peter Ralston. Yes, it wasn't to the record, Valerie. I'm sure captured it.
Okay.
Okay, very good. We close the public hearing. Thank you very much, Ms. Famagaleti and your applicant. And we'll have gone to, out of the public hearing section and move back into our meeting and go into unfinished business at this point. And look at that, we'll be discussing PZ dash two, three, dash three, the special permit application for section three hundred dash ten for reduction of a nonconforming use at fifty-four C-Car Road, owner applicant Ruby Realty LLC. So we're open for deliberations amongst the commission. Comments, questions, concerns?
Jeff, I think it'd be a good idea for what Alex had said for Mike to summarize the points that he had put as special conditions.
Mike, do you want to do that, or you want me to do that?
Summarize the the suggested motions?
Yes.
Sure, I can go through them. Sort of keep it at a high level. So hold on, let me just pull it up. Okay, so basically, these everything that's that is on here kind of came from the last public hearing. And then there's also some stuff that's included that gets into what we had discussed that was outstanding. So the first one is a pretty standard condition, basically not finalizing the approval until they file the certificate of action on the land records. The importance of that is is that we know that this property will will go for sale, and we want future buyers to understand the conditions of the approval. So by putting this on the land records to not only finalize the approval, but it puts us in a position of making sure that anybody interested in the property, doing a search on the property, will know what those are. The current, the second condition, which says the current religious nonconforming use is to be willfully terminated by the owner upon the filing of this certificate of action. So preexisting nonconforming uses are protected and can only really truly say that they have been terminated or that they are no longer existing when you have evidence that shows that the property owner has willfully terminated their right to that use. So the lack of use is not a valid rationale for saying, okay, that use has gone away. So now that we are giving them an approval to move into a different use category, I wanted to clarify and confirm that a year from now, they don't say, well, that didn't work for us. We want to go back to what we were doing before. The the third one requires that all three residential buildings be conveyed together and remain in common ownership. That came out of the public hearing, basically making it so they don't create some strange condo situation where where homes continue to be sold, but but you know, they're drawing basically ownership lines in lieu of property lines. The condition for the current parcel shall not be reduced in size from its current configuration of twenty-four plus or minus acres without prior approval from the commission. The reason that this was included is because, again, they are asking for approval from you to to go to another nonconforming use. Granted, it's less nonconforming, but what I didn't feel was appropriate was that they get this special permit use and then a month from now, a year from now, show up and say, we have twenty-four acres. We'd like to do a subdivision and take the remaining twenty acres and split it up into eight residential building lots. I felt like that was trying to squeeze more out of the parcel than was appropriate, given that there's a nonconforming use. So I put that on there. It still would allow them to come back to the commission if they wanted to ask that question, but doesn't inherently give them the right to just subdivide. So number five just clarifies that the use is still nonconforming. They're not getting a variance. So this is still a nonconforming use, what what you are considering approval for, but it is a less nonconforming use than what's there. But it again clarifies how it will be treated based upon the zoning rigs. Number six prevents them from turning one of the units into a duplex or looking to establish a accessory dwelling units or trying to do anything else that would further expand the number of dwelling units on the property. Number seven is the fire department condition, if you will. It requires that they install the driveway as depicted on the plan that was originally approved when the chapel was given approval to build prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So again, if they don't do anything with the property now, that's okay. But if they want to start doing anything with the with the building and occupying it, they need to have that access in there. So the fire department feels like can adequately respond on the property. The number eight, so the chapel currently is not totally complete and it does not have a certificate of occupancy. So this requires that a certificate of occupancy be obtained from the building official prior to their use of that building. And as part of the certificate of occupancy process, they'll need to verify health department stuff and also zoning. And the number nine, again, is just a sort of a belt and suspenders on on my part. I want to be very clear that we are not suggesting that the building department or the Eastern Highlands Health District are suggesting that this change of use is approved, or we're not implying that there's anything that happens with those agencies. The building code and the health, public health code still apply. And so I just wanted to clarify that this is not a Town of Ashford approval. It is a planning and zoning approval. Again, because it, from what we have been told, the the owner of the property and the person likely responsible for executing these conditions is not the current owner. So I wanted to be clear for a future owner that, you know, these are our expectations as the town. And I have gone over these with the applicant to make sure they understand what they mean and are comfortable that they can execute them.
Okay, thank you for that information. Appreciate it. Does it raise any questions from the commissioners? Okay, that's a count of thirteen. All right. Okay, since the commission has no more input, and we've already spoken to our attorney regarding this, as we spoke of before, we've gotten the input regarding the fire marshal's needs. Also, again, Mike and Valerie have captured the concerns of the commission from the last hearing and that information. Is there a motion on the floor from anyone regarding?
Yeah, Mr. Silversmith, Alex, I'd like to make motion that we approve this application with the. make motion that we approve this application with the, with the conditions that were read in.
I'll second that.
Dick seconds it. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the motion Alex has put forward to accept the application with the stipulated conditions? Say aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain from that. Lord Jacob, what?
Okay, and so moved. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, folks. Thank you for your patience overall. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Item B, PZ dash twenty-three dash one, the text amendment application for article three hundred dash fourteen definitions, article three hundred dash nineteen interstate interchange development zone. Applicant being Campanelli Rodasca, kill that name every time, I'm sorry, LM Acquisition LLC and Asher Realty Trust LLC. Before we begin into deliberations, I just want the commission to be fully aware that we have had a few times the petition uh, regarding the text amendment application pertaining to the zone. And again, as provided by the section eight point three B of the Connecticut General Statutes, when a change to the zoning regulations or map is submitted to the commission, a protest petition can be filed prior to or during the public hearing process. When a petition signed by more than twenty percent of the area of the lots included in such proposed change or of the lots within five hundred feet in all directions of the property included in the proposed change, such change cannot be adopted by the commission without a two-thirds majority vote. Again, this is all part of the public record. The response from our, both our legal counsel as well as our town staff is that the required acreage is, has not been met by the signed owners. So accordingly, a two-thirds majority vote by the commission is not required for the approval of this application. To make everyone aware of that.
So basically Jeff, you are saying it is simple, a simple majority.
A simple majority will pass whatever motion is made, okay? On this application. All right, so regarding the application, I just want to do a very short preamble to our discussion. The simple goal of the application is to make the land located within the IID or Interstate Interchange Zone more attractive for sale to large development and to expand the market of potential purchasers of said development within the zone. More specifically, the added uses of warehousing, distribution centers and research facilities, including research, development and testing labs are identified to expand the potential market. To entice these potential buyers and promote the actionable use of the zone, specific increases in allowable square footage, height and changes to setback requirements are being sought under the request for a text amendment. This request also includes the addition of limiting building coverage from, of limited building coverage from twenty-five percent to thirty percent. So it's allowing that to go up and an increase to the open space requirement from ten percent to thirty percent. Uh, in our deliberation, no consideration should be based on a non-existent proposed site plan or structure not currently before the commission. Nor should consideration be based on hypothetical and unsubstantiated calculations of tax benefits or tax relief with no proposed development on the table. That being said, um, I open it up to the commission members for further discussion. Any input?
Uh, Jeff?
Yes, Richard.
Is it appropriate for me to give some background as to how the numbers that are in the current regulation came about? Since I wrote them?
Oh, you're saying the, the size requirements?
Uh, no, the, the thirty-five foot height and the size requirement and, and the other items that are currently in the regulations.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Yep. We were going through with the primary focus on the residential agricultural section rewrites. And we decided to also include the IID area in, in terms of updating. The what was put in the revised regulations was basically the same thing that was in the previous regulations. Because at the time, I didn't have any input from anyone that said thirty-five foot height was good or bad. We simply went with, with what was already there. Same went for the setback and the maximum building size. So what was currently in the regulation as it exists today was simply a carryover from what was put in probably ten, fifteen years ago. The idea being at the time that when something would come up with a more definitive basis for use, we could address it at that point in time, which is what we're doing now with the changes that are proposed by the I can't think of the, the current applicant. So I, I, I think it's worthwhile to understand the history of how, what's there got there. It wasn't done with any deliberation on any technical merits. It was just a carryover from what was already there with the idea that when something would come up, we would address it at a later date. That's all I have to say, Jerry.
Okay, thank you, Dick. Other comments from commissioners? This is your time, this is your time to talk about it. Go ahead, Nord.
I could say something. As an elected member of this commission, I, I represent the constituents and, and I I think I, my vote will reflect the desires of, of the constituents as I see it, because there's been overwhelmingly vocalization about this item.
Okay, North, while I can, I can appreciate that. We're all here represented, or representative of our constituents. We are also a board that has a number of requirements to follow, including when it comes to language for our regulations, how we are responsible for dealing with those per state statute as opposed to a public vote or popular vote or anything like that. We really need, again, part of our responsibility is to look for the current and future needs of the town overall. And again, it isn't so much a, a popular vote as it is as elected officials. We need to come to a decision that we feel is right and meets both our regs, our plan of conservation development and any zoning map issues that we have. So thank you for your input.
Yeah, Jeff, along those same lines, going back to history. I was also the the head of the committee that wrote the plan of conservation and development. And in particular, looked at the need to make this area the IIT conducive for industrial commercial development. And if one reads the entire section of the POCD, you'll see that there's a lot of action items that are within that, which include examining what the requirements would be to see that we would have development at this, in this zone. Also, I think it's important to note some of the other history. One of the things that we included that's in the regulations was this requirement that if someone comes in with a large proposal, it would be, you know, a development in that area, that they put up a funds that would allow the town to evaluate that proposal. The amount of those funds would be one percent of the value of the development or fifty thousand dollars, whichever is, is greater. We put that up because we had one application for this area, not on this property, but on a property that's adjacent, where the applicant wanted to put in a waste processing facility. And we felt at, at a loss at that point in time to, to evaluate that because it was beyond the technical capabilities of, of the commission. And we didn't have funds to do that at the point. But as it was, that was withdrawn, so it did, it became a moot point. We also at this property had a proposal to put in a wind farm. That was also discussed at, at length. As it turns out that wind farm became a, again, a moot point because the FAA requires anything that goes above fifteen hundred feet above sea level that would not be avail, not be possible to be built. So a wind farm was shot down on that basis. But I think the point I want to bring up is that the developers that have bought this property and anyone that would want to buy this property are going to try to find some way to develop the property. And, and as we look at what we change on this, making it more conducive for things that might be done at the site, I think is in the interest of this commission and the town. If, you know, who, who knows what might be proposed for this site? This site is zoned, industrial, commercial, and it is a area of focus for development. And it's not going to, unless someone would propose to change the zoning regulations, it's not something that is going to be kept rural indefinitely because it is a significant piece of property that could add to the tax base for the town. We don't know what that would be, but we do know that any development that's not residential would be of benefit to us. So I, I, I think as we look at these proposed changes, that we do that in terms of a long-term making this a, an area that is conducive for the items outlined in a plan of conservation and development and in the preamble to the section of these regulations.
So Dick, since you're going through this, some historical information, do you have any input regarding the omission of warehousing, distribution and research in the area?
One of the things when you put up uses, you don't list every possible use that you could think of. You, it, it says industrial and commercial use. I certainly think that a warehouse is an industrial and commercial use. The fact that it was not named specifically. I don't see that as a meaning that is, is excluded. It simply is not named. And there's a lot of places within the special permitting within our regulations where we do not name every possible use, but we name some that would be suggested. And I think that a warehouse falls within the industrial commercial and that it does not have to be specifically listed to be accepted. Just like we'd had people coming in for a trash sorting facility. There's nothing in our regulation that lists a trash sorting facility as an accepted use, but it still came in under that umbrella classification, the same for the wind farm. And there could be all sorts of other things that could come in under this umbrella. It is an industrial, commercial zoning. And there's a lot of industrial, commercial zoning that could be proposed to the site.
Now, we've had, we've had written comment sent to us specifically identifying from previous um, zoning commissioners that warehousing and distribution was specifically identified as, not as by omission, but identified as not an appropriate use there.
Yeah, I was the one that wrote that and I was the one that brought it up for the commission. And I'd like to talk to whoever, you know, made that comment. It was just like the comment that has been made several times by people that this is the gateway to Ashford. It was never, this, this is an industrial, commercial zone. It was, it's never intended to be a a rural gateway to Ashford. It, it was intended to be an industrial, commercial zone. So people maybe have a different remembrance of the history. Before, before being on the commission, I sat in on the approval of the previous regulations and I, you know, sat through all of them in benefactor, if Dorian's still on, she was the, the, the legal advisor at that time. And we had a lot of the back and forth at that point and I, I never ever heard of, of anything ever said by anyone excluding a warehouse application. I mean, a warehouse application versus having a trash sorting facility. Trash sorting facility is a lot more controversial use than a warehouse or any other, you know, more benign use that is being proposed here. Although it, it's important, as you pointed out, Jeff, we do not have any proposed use submitted by anyone. All we have are changes to the regulations. That's the only thing we have.
Okay, thank you, Dick. I, I'd just like to point out also, and I quote directly from the POCD of which you had stated that you were the lead contributor, writer of the last POCD version. And although the IID is remote for most of the town, it is also a gateway into Ashford for people arriving from nineteen eighty-four, from Interstate eighty-four. Therefore, an effort should be made to preserve the scenic beauty of the area, the natural resources such as wetlands, Maury Pond and the Mount Hope River. Likewise, any economic development should be mindful of these sensitive environmental sources. So that's in the last version, specifically identifying it as a gateway.
Yep, it, it is there and it was identified as a gateway. And John Filczek, who was a consultant to us at the time, was the party that was very adamant that that be there. And, and frankly, you know, if you think about the example I gave, having a trash sorting facility would definitely not fall into a gateway to Ashford. Because, you know, we've talked about having a traffic going in and out. A trash sorting facility would be, the, the traffic would, would come in for that, would be coming in on forty-four, on eighty-nine and all over the place and many more trucks coming back and forth than anything we've been talking about here. And that was a, a specific proposal that was made. And having a trash and all of the attendant things like seagulls coming at, you know, with the trash would definitely not ma- make it a attractive gateway to the town.
Well, the thing is, um, you know, no one's talking about the trash facility. That was not approved. And we're dealing with some different level of potential usage on this that yes, is not specifically identified. Subjectively, some members, I guess, are Subjectively, some members, I guess, are thinking that it does fall under the industrial. I, again, I I open it up to any input from some of the other commissioners at this point.
Jeff, I've got a comment.
Yes, Jeff.
I just want to remind the other commission members that any text amendments, change amendments that are proposed do not tell us what kind of development really might happen at this area. And any benefit to the town or liability to the town are just speculative. So that we really need to consider what these changes, you know, would do to the town. And keep that in mind when we consider these changes.
Thank you, Jeff.
And Jeff, I'll give you an example of one item that was talked about. We talked about having a hotel at this location. And a hotel would definitely, if it was a higher rise hotel, would definitely exceed the 35 foot height. And the discussion at that point is we'd consider things like that when the an application was on the table. So it it this whole issue of height and and the other items that are now up for discussion. When we talked about different uses of the property at exit 72, were, you know, discussed. And for instance, talking about the wind farm, those things were, you know, in the thousands of foot tall, not more than 35 feet. But that was one of the potential uses that was talked about at one point in time. So it's 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 where we are looking at this in the abstract to reiterate Chef's comment. One cannot help but think, and and I was given the background of what drove us to put in what we put in, just so there's some context of it. It wasn't done in a way that we wanted to set these things in concrete forever and ever. It was, we'll see what comes in and then we'll look at what we'll do with it at that point in time.
Thank you, Dick. Um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments based on some of the information that I looked through. Some of the issues I'm wrestling with are conflicts with the zoning regs and the P O C D. Under the current Ashford zoning regs, as stated in section 300-19 of the I I D zone, the purpose, the purpose of the I D zone is to provide economic opportunity consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development in the town by permitting the operation of large scale business industries and complementary commercial activities. Item B of that is proposed development must demonstrate that there will be compatibility with adjacent residential and non-residential development and that will not negatively impact the adjacent development. Well, the proposed development, and again, I know we're not talking development directly, but this was offered up by the applicant. They opened up that can of worms in their presentations, just in use and in scope. I feel is not adequately demonstrate that the changes would meet this requirement. And again, it's, we don't know what's going in there, but that's the concern that we don't know what's going in there. The other item that I have is the zone is intended to project the image and character of an attractive and distinctive gateway to the town of Ashford. Again, this is from our regs. And again, the size, the scope and the changes requested of the regulations that are sought by the applicant do not do not meet the image or the character requirements as identified. And further, the purpose of the I D zone is to promote economic viability, operational sustainability of agricultural business in the town of Ashford, as outlined in the Ashford P O C D. Specifically, these regulations are intended to address food and fiber needs, enhance environmental quality and the natural resources based upon which the agricultural economy depends, make the most efficient use of non-renewable resources and on-farm resources and integrate where appropriate natural biological cycles and controls, sustain the economic viability of farm operations and put in place an agricultural friendly community. Again, those are right from our regs.
Yeah, and Jeff, let me say within every zone, the commercial zone, the residential zone, there's language very similar to that everywhere. And within the membership of the planning, zoning commission at the time this was done, there was a strong representation of the farm community. And they contended that we could put a large farming facility at exit 72 as as well as any other place within the town. And they wanted to put the same language in all of the areas, commercial and residential. But I would also point out on page 35 of the plan of conservation and development, a lot of comments are made about the lack of the ability to develop this area. And the first thing that's I get my right glasses that I can read this. It's hell if had three different cut glasses to read and see things. But the objective one is determine the reasons why this area has remained undeveloped and determine how best to attract businesses to this special area. And the first item of that objective was perform a strength, weakness, opportunity and threat assessment in concert with the commercial development and landowners. Develop a plan for development of this this bar and consider in the coordination with the adjacent towns in Wellington and Union. It was then to go on and actively the objective two was to to commercially market. And I won't read this whole page, but it was it was to secure end market, you know, this area to try to develop it. And then the the last one is is to make sure that whatever we put in there does not negatively impact the Lake Shafi area or any of the other areas like Maury Pond and the like around that. So it's the whole tenet of the plan of conservation development is to figure out what is preventing us from developing this area and finding a way to get around that without impinging upon the rural character of what we have there. So it's, you know, this, I've been involved in planning, zoning or economic development or other things probably close to 20 years. And I've listened to numerous people over this time come in and trying to find ways to develop this area. And it's, it's been a frustrating thing. We've talked about a a recreational area at one point in time, like water parks. We've talked about a recreational vehicle thing that's like what's built up the up the road in in Union. And there's been many other developments that have not come to come to fruition. One way or the other, the objective of the plan of conservation and development is to figure out why things have not worked out and figure out what we can do to make it happen. And that really plays right into what we're talking about, you know, tonight, which are the proposed changes in the numerical items associated with the you know, height areas and and the like. So, okay, I'll kind of truncate there. I see that Max Schnopel is getting his hand raised.
Go ahead, Mark.
I had to find my unmute button. And to propose amendment 300-19, third page, section D1. You know, language, our our current regulations state structural size, the amendment is proposing changing it to building footprint. And I just want to make sure all the commission members, I I know it was discussed. But I just want to make sure it's clear that, you know, building footprint means the area of land measured at finished grade that is enclosed within the X exterior walls of a building. So interior first floor square footage of the, you know, of the footprint. Structural size is the outside dimensions of the footprint, you know, including any architectural features that a building may have. So building, you know, footprint would disregard additional square footage provided also by additional floors, you know, such as a, you know, a third mezzanineum, which was discussed during the public hearing, you know, and also if it was, you know, a second or third story building. So, you know, structural size is always larger than, you know, building footprint, which is the actual square square footage. So structural size includes architectural features. The other thing, you know, looking at the amendment is, you know, they're proposing that retrain retaining walls not be included, you know, in the setback requirements. And, you know, retaining walls could be something as, you know, as simple as, you know, an architectural feature. But I I work in Waterbury. And, you know, I don't know how many people have driven down the I 84 corridor in the Waterbury, but a retaining wall in Waterbury can be 50 feet tall. You know, right on your property line to increase the, you know, usable land, especially on a, you know, a steeply graded property. You know, like that at the Ashford Motel. So I think, you know, there's, I I understand the reasoning of including the retaining wall in in the exceptions in the amendment. Again, I'm I'm making some assumptions here. But, you know, this isn't going to be an architectural feature retaining wall. This is going to be a retaining wall that, you know, increases the the developable land mass on a on a steep slope. So I just want to make sure the commission members were aware what what those language changes mean.
Thank you, Mark. And I I can tell you that I've actually traveled up to the Uxbridge site that is offered as a development by the applicant Campanelli, as well as the Charlton Massachusetts sites. And both of those have pretty much what you're talking about. It's for lack of a better term, it looks like kind of a castle up on a parapet with the retaining walls that they use for those two sites. That's, that's really all I can do give as an example. And again, I have no idea if their zoning required them to have those inside or outside of the setbacks. It's just, yeah, they're pretty substantial that are being used there. They are not architecture architectural in nature, as you pointed out.
Right. And I think that's where it would be, you know, beneficial for the committee to to look at the grade. You know, I've I personally have looked at the grade of that site. You know, so if you go from the Ashford Motel down toward the highway, but I'm I'm not certain that all commission members have have looked at that grade to see what the impact of a retaining wall that, you know, wasn't part of setback requirements would have on the development of that property. I think that's I I think that's important as part of the deliberation process that that we look at the entire industrial zone, not just that one parcel, but the but the impact of not including a retaining wall in that setback requirement would have over the overall development of of the industrial zone.
Okay. Again, thank you, Mark. Other comments from commissioners? Yes, Janet.
Hi, thank you. I just like to take this opportunity to thank you, Chair Silver Smith, for your being fair and efficient in running these meetings. And I'd like to thank the applicant for giving us a full picture of what they would like to do in answering our questions. But as you pointed out, we're not voting on their proposed structure. We're voting on changing our regulations that would affect everyone. I'd also like to thank the public for other their input. And I I would like to correct Dick because a a previous planning and zoning commissioner who wrote the original regulations did testify that they discussed warehouses and distribution centers and did reject that as being appropriate for this area. Times have changed, but I think we need to, you know, pay attention to to their deliberations. Somebody, one of the public did write that we shouldn't make piecemeal changes. And I think that there are problems with both the planning of conservation and development and our planning and zoning regulations. And this development doesn't, this proposal doesn't really fit into our vision of the town. And I don't think we should make changes to the zone without looking at the whole zone in a totality totality. And I think, you know, Mark has made some good, good points on that. And so has Jeff. Well, both Jeffs. So I think it would be worthwhile for the committee to to visit the zone and look at it and look at how we protect our resources and balance protecting our resources with possible development. And I I don't think our regulations do that appropriately now, and I don't think that we should approve this at this time.
Thank you, Janet. You're all set?
Yep, I'm set.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from any of the commissioners?
Janet, you, we keep referencing a previous commissioner. Are we talking about Tony?
Yes, yes.
I I heard all the things that Tony said and and I sat through every discussion before I was on this commission. And I never heard any discussion of excluding warehouses whatsoever in any of those meetings.
Well, that's that's his his recollection as opposed to yours. I can't.
Yeah, well, I mean, and it's it, there's nothing in the commission that says says we're excluding something. Okay, but I I I sat hours and hours, not as many hours as these meetings have gone, but I I sat through probably 20 meetings where these regulations were discussed and I had all the copies of them. And the commission was good enough to let me make comments as a non-member of the commission at that time. So but it's, you know, for whatever it's worth, our recollection, it's it's not in writing excluding warehouses. And I'm not proposing that we, you know, include warehouses as a specific use. I'm simply saying that industrial and commercial includes a lot of different uses.
To that end, I I find it very interesting also that in looking at the examples given by the applicant, those in Uxbridge, Bellingham, Middleborough and Boxborough, Mass. If you look at what they've currently done there, out of the 15 sites of development that were put in, less than, or excuse me, nine of those were less than 250,000 square feet, which is what our current regs allow for in that zone. And again, that size is approximately the size of the FedEx facility in Wellington. 12 of the sites of the 15 were less than 500,000 square feet. And which is 80% of them. Only three were greater than 500,000 square feet. And none of them approached a million, which is the upper limit, the upper 1.1 million being proposed by the applicant on this. You know, I, it's hard. You know, I, it's hard, it's hard, maybe I'm just naive, but it's hard for me to fathom why something isn't marketable at. Two hundred and fifty thousand square feet when it seemed. Eighty percent of the, or excuse me, sixty percent of the time it was previously in years most recent. Alex, you have a statement?
Oh, yes, I, I like to second the Jan said about not rushing into anything to, on this large development. I mean, if, if we. We still can be looking at. Adjusting our regulations without the rushing into it because we only have one time to take care of this. If we. Get carried away and, and we make the, a big mistake with something like now, we never can take it back. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Mark, do you have another comment?
I, I, I do. You brought up, you know, height. As well, and you know, right now Wellington has a. Height limit of forty feet, but all the surrounding towns, including Sturbridge are at thirty-five feet. Sturbridge does have an exception for hotels. Under a special permit, they will allow hotels taller than thirty-five feet. But, you know, as it currently stands, you know, our regulations at, at thirty-five feet. You know, are, are the norm in our. In our area, you know, with the exception of Wellington, which is, you know, five feet higher. You know, I, I did mention that I, you know, just in my personal readings, you know. Thirty-five foot clear span warehouse is pretty common today, but that would require. You know, a height of, you know, twelve feet on top of that. You know, see, you know, you're looking at approximately fifty feet if, if you're looking to approve. You know, a modern warehouse facility. But again, I think we're in line currently with what surrounding towns have as, as height restrictions. You know, whether that's, you know, good or bad for development, I can't say, but that's, you know, that's what our, our neighbors have as well.
Thank you, Mark. Jerry, did you have a comment?
I guess, after reviewing. Everything about this property, the wetlands, the. The proximity to the Maury ponds and the rivers and. My concerns about the effect on our water table. That. I. I also looked into the history of the area from. Ashford was first developed and this whole area was totally ignored by farmers and everyone else because of the terrain. That is unbuildable practically because of the steepness of the grade and. I. Find it very hard to. Approve this and I, I would like to make a motion to deny the. Make a motion to deny.
Okay, making a motion to deny. I will allow for further discussion, but is there a second to Jerry's motion? Excuse me, Mark, you have your hand raised?
I, I did. But it wasn't a second.
Understood.
Jerry at this time. You know, I, I think it, it would behoove our commission members. To, to research the mistakes that other towns have made in, in changing. Their regulations and also look at those towns that we feel have done it right. Again, I've, I've done a lot of reading and I, I think moving forward. Sturbridge is definitely a town that, that we should look at. And their P and Z regulations, I think they're probably a little more in depth than, than we need. Currently in our town, but you know, they go so far as, you know, trees. That need to be planted, you know, on development sites as well as what types of, you know, trees. So I think we can certainly be. More thorough than our regulations currently are. And since I do have the mica, you know, I will second the motion.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mark seconds, so we have a second on a motion to deny the current application as proposed. Is there further discussion on this?
Mister Chair?
Yes, Janet.
Do we need to clarify? That motion or can we? Just yes or no?
The, simply put, the application as submitted and subsequently modified by the applicant. Proposes revisions to Article three hundred fourteen and Article three hundred nineteen. And which are not consistent with the plan of conservation development and the town's comprehensive plan. Would that meet your needs?
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
Jeff, I'm not sure where you get that language. I'm not sure that what is being proposed in terms of the text amendment is not in. In concert with the plan of conservation development as per what I've read into the record a while back. You know. Anytime one is involved in, in developing these regulations, especially the. Preambles to the regulations, there's a lot of. Compromises that are inserted in. And I think the one I would reference the most is the food and fiber and the farming one. You know. What I think we should look at what's being proposed in the context of the height. Square footage and in one of the discussions that we had earlier is there's enough land. To put three or four two hundred and fifty thousand square foot buildings. And still meet all the existing zoning requirements. So it's, it's having one. Million square foot building is not necessarily something that has to happen. It could be done in smaller buildings on the site. And, you know, the comment that Mark brings up about the retaining walls. I would say that definitely should be looked at. You know, having the retaining wall go all the way out to the property line or close to it does not sound like a. A way to make this a inviting. Use to the gateway to Ashford. I would think it should be set back further from the property line. But, you know, that's something that, that we should look at.
Well, I think, I think most of us are in agreement that, you know, times have changed. Business has changed, the nature of the real estate market has changed. And what was good, as you said, you know, some of the parameters that were carried over from two thousand fourteen were actually. From the previous version, ten years before that. So there are things we definitely do need to look at, I think. I guess one of my concerns, I believe this was brought up by Janet, that, or and Alex for that matter, for us to rush to a decision for a. Single request like this from a single landowner. Gives me pause. I really think we should look at this as a group. I really think we should look at this as in conjunction with the P O C D, which is coming due within two years at this point right now. And kind of update both documents, but update them. To meet our needs, to meet the needs of the citizens, to meet the needs of Ashford. Numerous citizens of Ashford as opposed to a, a single request from a single landowner on this. And what its effects might be.
And Jeff, I would echo, I think you said it in a couple of different times. I think the applicant by putting forth. Such details as they have relative to development, including, you know. Site plans and the like has really clouded this issue. We're not approving a mega warehouse.
Right.
This is simply approving changes to the regulations.
And that is what I do, saying deny.
Excuse me?
Hold on, hold on, Jerry. Mark, you have your hand up?
I did. I just wanted to agree with you, Jeff. You know, I, I agree one hundred percent with what you just said. I, I think we, we were looking at. At revising that section prior to COVID and then COVID hit and we haven't met in person since then. So I think the commission as a whole knows that we need to, to look at that section again and revise it. But I agree with you, you know, I don't think this is something we need to rush into and when someone wants to propose an amendment. To three hundred dash nineteen that we should make a rash decision. I think, I think this requires, you know, deliberation. I think it. Requires us, you know, convening a, a subcommittee, you know, to look at proposed changes and bring it. Forward, you know, to the commission for discussion and revisions.
We also got a lot of volunteer aspects from the community, people who do have expertise in various areas, which I think we could. Potentially used to our benefit, similar to when, as Dick mentioned, when he was not a member, but. Was allowed to give input regarding the. Regs and so.
I, I, I agree. I just think we need to be careful about. Personal biases.
Oh, absolutely.
Listening to, you know, the open hearing, I, I think there was a lot of opinion and personal bias. In that hearing, I think that's, even though we had a lot of people volunteer, I think that's. Something we, we should probably avoid. I'm a facts and figures kind of guy.
I, I don't, I don't want, I don't want to give up any type of control or anything, obviously. It's just simply, you know, using the resources we have and then potentially, you know, look into. We have resources with ECOG and the engineering there. We have other resources available to us to use. In a thoughtful nature, we need to work on this.
Correct. I think we should look at professional. Professional opinion and if we have to hire. You know, someone for some analysis, I think that's something we should consider.
And Mark, I'll apologize in that. What you had gone through and looking to surrounding towns is something that I had done on some of the previous line use regulations. I unfortunately have had. Time in the hospital and, and recovery from a number of things that have precluded me. Matter of fact, I'm standing right now because I can't sit and, and participate in this meeting. So I've not been able to do these kind of things that I did, you know, three, four, five years ago. But I think looking at what is being done by surrounding towns and seeing how we can do that. But I, I go back to the point that I made in the first objective in the P O C D. Is acknowledging the fact that we have not been able to. Get development at this area. This part and finding out what we need to do to encourage development. I was doing that with the Economic Development Commission hat at one point. And I've been doing it to some extent with the planning zoning hat. But finding a way to have this, this property developed. In a responsible way going forward, I think is fine. I mean. That making this a nature preserve is not going to help the tax base. It's one of the few areas. In the town that where we could actually do development that could be significant where it doesn't impact anybody. I mean, it's off by itself at the interchange. It, it abuts very few people, if any. And, you know. Finding a good use for this property is, I think, in the interest of the town. And whether we act on all the specifics that's being proposed by the applicant here. You know, I, I wish that they had not gone so far as putting up things like site plants because I think that has muddied the water like crazy. In not being able to consider things like retaining walls and how they fit into the overall site plan. That's something I think frankly would be much better addressed in a very specific application. Not in a fixed regulation. You know, so I, I can see a lot of things that I don't like with the way this has come to us. But at the same token, I, I, you know. I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of outright rejecting this. I would be in favor of. Taken a stance that we. Don't accept it, that's different than rejecting it and then form a. Committee like we did with other parts of the regulations to come up with changes. That would be conducive for industrial, commercial development in this area. And I, I could vote for that, but I, I could not vote for outright just, you know, saying no to the whole thing.
Move the question.
Uh, we're still in discussion, Jerry, Mark.
Um, I, I would agree with. Dick's last assessment if. If, if Jerry would make a friendly amendment to just a, a language change. And I agree with Dick that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm not anti-development, you know, I think I eighty-four on its own. Has ruined the rural character of that section of the town. So I'm, I'm not opposed to, to development of the property by any stretch of the imagination. But if, if Jerry might consider a friendly amendment to. Change the language to his statement to what Dick had stated.
I would say no. That we can always go back and review this and check the changes.
I, I, I'm a bit hesitant to, thank you, Jerry. I'm a bit hesitant to make a motion that puts. If you will, additional pressure on the commission. To follow through on something because then it comes to when, where, how and all of this. I think we need to deal with the application itself. A more friendly nature or more friendly. Motion might be to put the motion out to accept and then let the vote fall, how the vote will fall. Just because you're putting something in to accept a proposal or a, a motion to accept. A request or an application doesn't mean it's going to pass. It's just simply a matter of how the votes go. So. Jerry, I don't know if you're of a mind to change it that way, to put it on the table.
Well, what I'm saying is we can make a motion to deny. Approve a motion to deny and. In the future meetings, we can.
You, you can't vote inside your motion, Jerry.
Another motion. I'm saying in future meetings, we can. Revice the, the regulations if we find we have a need to.
This, um, Mister, oh, Mister Chair?
Go ahead, Janet.
I would, I think it's better. Well, I think it's clearer to vote to deny because you're giving the reasons you're denying it. If you. Vote to approve it. And people deny it, you don't.
It's not a vote to deny or vote to approve. It's a motion to.
Motion, right.
Yeah. And then the vote takes place.
Right.
I'm, I mean. Again, in most cases, it's better to have a positive, a positive move forward, but in this case. I will let it go. So there's, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Can I just say one other thing? Sorry. I, I, I think, you know, in response to, to some of what Dick is saying that. It seems to me that the commission. Wants to move forward and wants to balance. Development with what's best for, for Ashford and, and best for, you know, the environment and, and the. Issues with that property. And I think both things can happen. It's so we're not saying no to development. We just want to move slowly and make sure that it. Um, we just wanna move slowly and make sure that it 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 works in the right way. Or that our regulations protect the town in the way they should.
Exactly.
I should point out that uh our existing regulation allows for development at that site. The only thing we're we're looking at here is changing in the height, some of the setbacks and the coverage areas. Uh and the size of the buildings. Someone could come in and adhere to what is there in writing uh and develop something that would meet that and and come in 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 front of us with a proposal. And it could be for X Y Z, I don't know. It doesn't have to be a warehouse, it could be a lot of different things. So we're not voting on whether we want to have development at that, at at that exit. We're we're voting on strictly text amendments on height uh square footage of the building and setbacks and other uh boundary areas. Uh, we're not voting on whether or not development would take place there.
But it's more than just the structural too, because there is usage requests in the in the application.
Yeah, and I I would uh say unequivocally uh that a warehouse and a lot of other things that aren't mentioned specifically in the uh uses. Uh, it is an industrial commercial use, and I would argue that it is one that could be built there. It it's it's not, it's not excluded. Contrary to what some people uh seem to have recalled was discussions, it's not in the regulations to exclude it.
No, but the application, the application is specifically asking for it to be put in.
Yeah, I I know it, I know that it is, and I've said before that I think the applicant uh has really shot themselves in the foot with too much detail uh and what they've put forth. Cause frankly, uh, you know when, you know, the the uh the number of uh no mega warehouses that I drive by uh going from my house to eighty-four is phenomenal. Uh, and I I think by them, you know, given examples of that, I think they've done themselves a disservice, they should never have, I, if I was in their shoes, I never would have done that. But I point out the fact that there is within our existing regulation, it is an industrial commercial zone. And there are sizes and setbacks that that are are part of other existing regulations and someone could come in tomorrow with some application, we don't even know what it would be, and they, and if it complies to what we have in writing, they would be perfectly uh uh acceptable to come in and make that proposal. You know, uh, you know, it's just like if we you know, we we have within our residential agriculture, uh we currently have various uh coverage areas and size of lots and the like, someone proposes to build a house and it meets all those requirements that we can't deny building the house, cause we don't like the kinda house they're gonna build. The same goes for the commercial area and same goes to the uh the industrial area and it it exits seventy-two.
And meeting the current regs as they are stated and uh put forward.
Yeah. So, I mean, I I would like to see something, you know, uh if I looked at what would be the next thing we would do as far as revising the regulations. The section that would be the next to go at and look at in more detail would be this area and the commercial area. We spent a good deal of time on the residential agricultural. And we could came up with, I think, some pretty good regulations. We didn't spend anywhere near the amount of time on the commercial and the commercial industrial.
Yeah, I thi- I think it would be in in our favor. So, if there's, is there any further discussion before we go to a vote?
I I I would again uh say Jerry, it would be wise if you modified your Okay, well, that's your decision, bye.
Hearing, seeing no other discussion, uh I put it to a vote of the commission and I'm going to poll the commissioners as opposed to a yea or nay on this. Regarding as stated by uh Jerry for the uh denial of the application for uh text amendment to article three hundred dash fourteen, article three hundred dash nineteen.
Okay, so we'll clarify if it's a, it's not a yes or no, it's it's just plain deny or correct? The the motion?
The motion, yeah, the mo- yes, yes means to deny the motion, no means to allow the motion to move forward.
That's why I just wanna clarify, okay, yes.
Uh, Dick Williams?
Um, I will abstain for the reasons that I've have espoused upon.
Mark?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Catherine? Catherine, are you still on?
Yes.
Thank you. Janet?
Yes.
Nord?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, it was a eight to zero with one abstention, so the application will not move forward. However, I think the discussion between the group is been good, I think we need to start putting this onto our agenda immediately in looking at the um interstate interchange zone and again, do it in conjunction with changes to the P O C D that uh cover both areas and work in agreement with each other. So I thank the commission, that was a long hearings, long appreciate it, thank you.
Good night Mister Chair, unless you need me for anything else.
I'm good, Ken, thank you very much.
My pleasure, good night.
Okay, moving on, uh to uh review of definitions of primary residence back on May thirteenth. I sent the commission members a uh memo from Ken Slater of Halloran Sage uh regarding the primary residence, um let me see about sharing that uh with everyone here. Or I guess, no, you need to give me uh the ability to share, Mike?
Okay, one sec. Give it a shot.
Okay, it's here somewhere, you're with me, here we go. Okay, so, um, in providing Ken with, can everyone see my screen?
No.
No, no.
Okay. You go back, oh, here we go, share screen, that'd be helpful. There we go, can you see it?
Got it.
All right, great. So, um, let me get this small too, there we go. So, um, again, I sent Ken uh the kinda combination as we discussed regarding uh primary residence. And um actually let me, let me find the uh one that has some of the other language on this, bear with me just a second. Uh, I gotta get out of this, here we go. And I wanna go to what I sent to the members. Uh, the thirteenth. Thirteenth to everybody. Oh, I'm on my inbox, sorry, stupid me. Here we go. Here we go. Okay, so, can everyone see, okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so Ken gave it a lot of thought, uh discuss it with his colleagues and what he sent back was primary residence, a dwelling unit that is in the residence where the occupant owner or occupant tenant spends most of the time. The occupant asserting that the property is their primary residence must provide evidence of residency, including copies of at least two of the following types of documents. Motor vehicle registration, unexpired driver's license, current voter registration, redacted United States Internal Revenue Service income tax document, or five monthly tip five, number five, monthly utility bills demonstrating primary residence, number six, a United States passport. What this was missing was a definition of most, which was uh discussed at many of our meetings ago when we first brought up primary residence. So, in the red, I just changed uh and added the definition of most, where most is defined of at least a hundred and eighty-three days in any one calendar year. So I am open for comment, I'm open for discussion regarding this as a uh acceptable definition of primary residence or not.
Uh, this is Janet, I I think it seems to cover all the bases, um I don't know what it would be missing.
Yeah, I think it covers it very well.
Mark Schnoval, I agree.
Okay. Um, any further input from anyone?
Uh, I just think it looks great.
That's what I was waiting for, Alex, thank you so much.
This is Janet, I'll make a motion that we accept it as the definition.
Jerry, you frame, I'll second.
All those in favor of using this as our definition of primary residence?
I
I
I
I
Okay, Mike, if you're there, how do we make this happen?
So I will need to, this will need to be treated as a text amendment, so we will have to run it through the standard process. So if you can send me the final version, I will prepare the the mo- memo and do the referrals to the regional agencies, and we would probably get this for hearing based upon the calendar, m- maybe at the June meeting, if not for July.
Okay, very good, if we can do June, the sooner the better, obviously, so I'll get this to you first thing in the morning.
Okay.
All right, thank you all for that, uh regarding primary residence and moving that forward for our short-term rental issues. Next item on the agenda, new business, P Z twenty-three dash six, let me stop sharing, get out of here. Okay, um, new business, P Z dash twenty-three dash six, text amendment application and for a townwide temporary moratorium on warehouse, distribution centers and research facilities, including research and development testing laboratories or centers. Uh applicant is Charles Vidic. Um, this is for receipt only at this point, uh Mike, regarding the application. Uh, all fees have been paid?
Yes.
And um all paperwork submitted appropriately?
Yes, so um following receipt tonight, I will do the referrals, just as I stated it for um this as well.
Okay, very good, and uh we'll put this on our agenda for the next meeting. Uh, very good, so uh zoning officer report. First item is two thirty-one Astrid Center Road, June Norcross Webster Scout Camp Reservation.
Yeah, so um we have been working with um the folks there and they are going to be doing, or they're in the early stages of um kind of the design for a building on the property. I'm gonna try to do a screen share so I can show you what I'm talking about. So our zoning regulations are a little bit unique in the way they delegate the authority of what needs to be approved by the commission and what can be approved by staff. There's a lot of things that, you know, you might consider to be accessory that I, as staff, approve. In this case, obviously, the property is a bit of a unique use, unique in size, and so the way that the zoning regs sort of contemplate what staff can approve, they're not a hundred percent clear and my intention was to bring this before you so that I could um get your feedback. They are going to be basically building what they're calling the Perry Perry Hall, and it will take the place of um a couple of other structures that are on the property and um provide some additional space, but it will not facilitate anything that is not happening on the property. So this is not a new place for people to be, you know, sleeping, this is not a a new activity that they're looking to do. It's basically a building that will be handicap accessible, will have some office space and some activity space for for campers. My inclination is, I'm gonna bring up an overall site plan, here we go, sorry, it's taking me forever to get all this stuff. My inclination is that, based upon what they're trying to do and that it's, even though it's a a new structure, it's not facilitating any new uses, that this be something that doesn't need to go before the commission for a full-blown special permit review. Um, but I wanted to
Jeff, could you put yourself on, okay, there we go, go ahead.
So I'm gonna just show you this here quickly. Okay. So, um, hopefully you can all see this. Um, this is the proposed um building location, there's a small pavilion right near it um in the existing trading post, so um the existing trading post will go away, um and the museum trailer, which is literally a trailer um will go away and this building um will be built in its place. Let me bring up for you what this is going to look like.
Will the pavilion remain, Mike?
Uh, I believe the the pavilion can be relocated just out of the way so that it can stay. So again, all right, let me see here. Here we go. So if I go back to sharing my screen. Did the plan change?
Yes.
So this is the building that they're proposing to build in that location. The opposite side will have um handicap accessibility, there will be a a small covered area and there will be some museum space, office space, so basically some additional square footage, but it's but but largely all the same stuff that's happening on the property now, just not um in a couple of different sort of detached structures, so um guess I'm looking for some confirmation that they don't need to come in for a full-blown special permit approval from the commission, and we can review this for for zoning standards like we would um at the staff level, but because this is sort of accessory to the use that's on the property. You know, they're not asking for anything new, we save them the the two months of trouble um of having to come through here, they are trying to use some available volunteers to get this constructed this season if possible, so I I told them I would bring this to your meeting for consideration.
Yeah, Mike, uh what I'd propose is that you go forward and work with them to develop the plan for plan for all of your concerns and the like. And then, uh, once you've done that, simply come back to the commission and summarize what you've approved.
I can do that.
And could you just reiterate what the zoning issue is regarding the, uh, large-scale area non-for-profit?
So the, the, really the issue is that the types of use, the types of approvals that staff can give are not exactly clear in this case. And so I didn't want to say the way I read it, it's good to go. I'm just going to approve it. And I also didn't want to, you know, sort of unilaterally decide that they needed to come to the commission for, um, you know, a, a full-blown review. So I, I wanted to come here to sort of get consensus from the commission before making a determination either way. So there's no, there is no inherent issue with the regs in that they are building something that is within a setback or is too tall. There's no violation or, or proposed problem with what they're asking to build.
So there, there's no requirement for, there's no requirement for the commission to review a site plan or anything like this? Even though, even based on the size of the structure they're looking to do?
Yeah, so we don't have a square, we don't have a, something in our regs that says anything above a certain square footage automatically goes to the commission.
Right. Don't, don't we have something with accessory dwelling over four hundred square feet or something?
We have a square footage requirement for an accessory dwelling unit.
I'm, I'm sorry, not, not a dwelling unit, but an accessory use building.
Let me.
Thought that was a memo added to the regs. Of course, my rigs are in such a state of disarray right now. You know, it's. Do you remember what I'm talking about, Alex?
Jeff, I would think this falls under the similar, uh, classification as to what the hole in the wall gang did when they rebuilt some of their structures after the fire.
Okay, and working with the, uh, building department and the zoning?
Yeah.
Office.
Yeah, and I think we've, and I'm fresh in my, my memory here, but, uh, a year or two ago, Mike brought up to the commission, uh, the proposal that would give him more autonomy. Uh, and so he could, uh, work with the applicant more directly instead of bringing everything to the commission, uh, where this is a pretty good-sized structure. My comment would be, you know, it's just so we're kept in the loop that Mike simply inform us what he decided on, you know, so the commission is aware of it.
Right, and bringing to us obviously anything actionable.
Yeah, and if there's a, a controversial item, then, you know, we could act upon that, but, uh, treating the whole thing as a special permit and going through all of the, the loops on that just doesn't seem to be necessary. We didn't do that for the whole new all game.
Well, again, again, Mike, as long as you feel they're falling within the regs, uh, whatever, however, you can apply the regs. If there's anything to apply.
Um, so the, there, the section of the regs says that permitted accessory uses in the R A or permitted accessory structures in any zone. Provided there's that I'm not approving what would be a modification to the special permit. So that language is just a little bit gray. I think that this building can be considered accessory to the use of the property and it, and an accessory building to the main use, which is obviously the, the camp. We're not modifying the permit in any way in that we're not giving them approval to use the property in any different fashion or for any different purpose. Um, but because this is, I think that language contemplates sheds and, and detached garages and those types of things. So this is a little bit different. We don't often see, you know, camps showing up looking to build these, these buildings, but all the same criteria would apply. They would still, I mean, they still prepared a site plan. They still have to demonstrate height and setbacks, public health code, wetlands, building, all those things are still there. I believe it fits under that criteria, but I just wanted consensus from the commission before I went ahead and issued that permit.
Do you need a motion or you just need, uh, go ahead?
Uh, I don't, I don't feel like I, I need a motion as long as anybody that feels differently says so now. Um, I, I'm, I'm okay. I, I think that it falls within that. And again, they're still going to meet all of the criteria. It's just, you know.
Right. Right. By the commission. Go ahead, Nord.
Uh, I, I worked at the summer camp as a volunteer and I'm, I'm up there all the time. And I'm familiar with this area and it's, it's really out of date. The trailer is too small for the heritage center. And the registration is done outdoors under a pavilion. If the weather's bad, it's really difficult to register a large group of people in, you know, if you have a rainstorm or something like that. So with modernizing this area would, would, and it's a very popular camp.
I, I, I don't think we're questioning the need in any way. I, I just think that, again, we just want to make sure that, uh, as Dick said, you know, it'd be nice to be kept in the loop on this for any issues. And if Mike identifies anything, you know, he can go forward, uh, so deemed by the commission. And if he finds anything that he feels to need to brought to our attention, he will do so.
Right, I understand that.
Uh, this is Janet. I'm fine with it.
Jerry Dufrano, I think I'm great with it too.
Yeah, it's Alex. I think it looks great to me too.
Yeah. I had proposed that we, Mike, you go forward to, within the parameters that I outlined previously.
Very good. Okay, I think we're good. Mike, go right ahead.
Okay, and, um, I, I also have, um, one other thing, um, that I would like to discuss with the commission and get their feedback on. It is probably best suited as an executive session item. Um, this is an, this is a regular meeting, so you can certainly add it to the agenda. I didn't have all the information when we made the agenda, which is why I didn't ask for it to be included. Uh, it's also something that we could deal with at a later date, either via a special meeting or otherwise if the commission wanted to. Um, this would be regarding, um, what could be potential future litigation. Um, and sort of wanting the commission's feedback on how to proceed.
Could I get a motion to move to executive session to discuss, uh, potential litigation?
So moved.
Janet.
Jerry and Janet. All those in favor of going to executive session?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved.
Okay, so I'm going to.
Okay, very good. Valerie, are you still with us?
I, I've got one question for Mike and it doesn't require, it's not a, a zoning question, but, uh, it's a building. I noticed the activity at the midway. Looks like they're getting ready to rebuild it. Uh, has there been a, uh, application to do that filed?
Um, so we've been sort of working with the owner. Um, there have been some plans floated, um, by the office and I believe he's coming in tomorrow morning for another review. So he's sort of in that, in that process, we're working towards getting him there.
So it's these, it's the same current owners?
Yes.
Hey. All right, Mike, anything else on our report?
Nope.
Get one last item. It was brought up at one of our previous meetings. The concern about the property, kind of kitty cornered on the other side of the fire station. The one that burned down, partially burned down. Uh, we were going to refer that to the board of selectmen to act upon it. Uh, was that done, Jeff?
Uh, not by an official means. I don't know if, Mike, you haven't had discussions with them, have you?
Uh, sorry, I, I was.
You can all in on this. I, I absolutely understand if you've been all.
No, no, I just, I missed a part of what he was asking.
Oh, it had to do with the, uh, the, uh, dilapidated, uh, burn site across from the fire station that Christina Zibo had brought up to us, uh, during public comment during one of the last couple of meetings.
Yeah, so, um, there's been a, a couple of, there are a couple of properties in town that, um, we've had different inquiries about and, um, uh, two weeks ago, we had sort of an internal staff meeting with some of the various departments, health department. We had, um, Ken Slater there. Um, also, we're, we're bringing up to speed the new chief building official. So we, we kind of reviewed a bunch of those and we're working to develop a plan of action and prioritize which ones. That property is on the list. So we're going through the various agencies to figure out who has what. Um, zoning does have a role on that property, absolutely. Um, it's just a matter of figuring out if, if anybody else does, and if not, then I will basically take the lead on that.
I, I can recall back some years past, there was another property further up the road from that property that was basically a realized junkyard. And the town foreclosed on that and caused it to be cleaned up. So I would think this is in a similar circumstance.
Well, I don't, I don't know what their tax situation is. There's nothing to foreclose on if it's not a tax situation. I mean, there's really nothing they can do from that standpoint, but, um, again, Michael, keep us aware of what's going on in this as soon as we figure out who's got the lead on it. Anything else for Mike? No? Okay, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Richard moves seconded.
Janet second.
Say, Janet, all in favor?
Aye.
Again, I want to thank all the commission. I know we had a very long, uh, deliberation, uh, more so the hearings, uh, with, uh, the text amendment and a couple of other hearings, the special meeting we've had this month. So you've really, uh, really earned your pay. Take a raise. And, uh, again, I thank you for all your efforts and your dedication.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good night, Jeff.
Good night.